To the chiefs about it as well, because I first brought it over to the public safety, but it's tough for them to get out during school hours. Whereas the city council meeting works.
Yeah, so how I.
Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts came in and led us. That kind of stuff.
What was it, guys' names?
I thought they really liked.
Okay.
Call the order, the regular city council meeting for October eighth, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, welcome all. Roll call Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
Present.
Councilmember Overhauser.
Trace, oh here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Present.
Councilmember Belloc.
Here.
Councilmember Nizarro. Councilmember Postuma.
Present.
Councilmember Labar is not present.
I do have a request to excuse Councilmember Labar from this evening's meeting.
So.
Thank you, motion second, all in favor say aye. Thank you, Councilmember Labar is excused. Next on the agenda, citizen comments, this is an opportunity for the public to provide testimony, comment to our city council. Offer it up to the crowd here first, I didn't see anybody sign up, but. Anybody out in the crowd wish to speak? How about those joining us virtually, I think it's just. Just a couple people. Going once, going twice. Okay, moving on to the minutes from our September twenty fourth regular city council meeting. If there are no corrections to those minutes, I'd accept the motion to approve them.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to second to approve our September twenty fourth regular city council meeting minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, ice habit, thank you, minutes are approved. Vouchers and payroll Cindy.
Expenditures of one million six hundred sixty eight thousand six hundred seventy nine dollars and fifty three cents. Our interdepartmental billing is thirty nine thousand three hundred twenty three dollars and sixty six cents for a total of one million seven hundred eight thousand three dollars and nineteen cents. And total payroll is one million one hundred eighty one thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars and thirty seven cents.
Uh your honor, the finance committee reviewed these items, I would move approval, and I would just explain in terms of the voucher total, it seems a little high, we paid a number of um. Purple Pipe Project uh bills this month, or this cycle.
I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a motion to second to approve the vouchers and payroll as presented, any questions for Cindy? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, ice habit, thank you Cindy, vouchers and payroll are approved. Uh we did not have any claims for damages, but there are, you can see the few small contracts that I signed. No information items, no appointments, we do have a couple action items, Mark, you're up first with ordinance Y seventy five, seventy five, lewd conduct, go ahead, Mark.
Okay. This, this sort of originated out of an issue um of the Eastern. Uh apparently there was a guy, sort of a trailer, like in person, was trailing some females around, and I'll just say acting in a very creepy way. Um and so prosecutor Mike Adams contacted Mr. Bond, the book, we really don't have anything on the books to be able to um deal with this time. So Mike did some initial research, and what you see in front of you is uh what we call the lewd conduct ordinance that will allow our officers, whether they be G D or U D, to handle situations like this one. We'll get into many of the details, but this is an important thing to have on the books. Not only in this situation, but any situation in the future that we presented, so, so um I bring this for you, before you tonight, I do have Mike Adams on the, on the Zoom, if uh you have the question for him, I'm sure he'll be happy to, to weigh in as well, but. Um I'd ask for all through readings when we do this thing, get this thing moving on the books.
Thanks Mark, thanks for joining us, Mr. Adams.
Absolutely happy to be here, I wish I could be there in person, I've only met a few of you in person, and hope to be able to meet all of you sometime soon.
Thanks Mike, any questions for Mark, yes, go ahead.
Um so what is the frequency in which these sorts of incidents occur that we now have to. Define some of these acts, I'm assuming it's more than just a one-off thing that happened at Eastern that spurs the need for this.
So for the sort of, or uh we think this is the same individual that did doing similar kind of things in town, um he had, didn't have a wall, uh G D, that just happened that day on, he really had a. Suspect per se till this situation for them, it felt there was just some people calling in these creepy sort of behaviors that they, they had seen, so I don't think this happens very often, but it's, it's a good proactive um ordinance to have on the book.
For one person.
Wow.
Or anybody.
To prosecute a single person.
But think about, this could happen at any time.
But I'm asking, what is the history of occurrences, like if something that happens. Frequently enough.
If, if I may say something.
Go ahead.
So I, obviously this is the first time that this has come up to me where this is really the only um, the only applicable charge if it had been on the municipal code. However, there are other incidents where lewd conduct is occurring, but so is harassment, or so is indecent exposure. Um I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this more bluntly than what Mr. Schuler said, what the individual was doing, uh. He was, he was masturbating on top of his clothes while following girls around.
Thank you.
Now, normally, when there's some kind of a behavior like this, there is something else, and so we have something that we can prosecute. Most cities haven't, when I say most, many cities have this ordinance because it's not in the R C W, Spokane does have it. Um and I think it'd just be appropriate to adopt the same ordinance that Spokane is using, so that when this behavior does happen, and it's isolated to only that specific behavior. There is something to hold someone accountable, other than just having him trespass from campus.
Mark. Uh yeah, I have a question. So I'm obviously in favor of people not having lewd acts in public. Um my question is under C. Okay, so this section is not applicable to, this is my concern, so we're okay. If, if I read this right, so help me if I'm not, I, I guess I just need some clarification, we're okay with somebody doing a lewd act as long as it's a class in public. Or a seminar.
In park.
Or in a park, or for an educational purpose, I'm, I, I would be okay with somebody doing a lewd act in public. Or in a performance, or a dance, so can you help me understand why I would be okay with somebody doing a lewd act? In those cases, because it's not applicable to it. Um I, I'm having trouble understanding that, why we'd be okay with them doing a lewd act, following behind someone, but as long as I call it a class, I can do a lewd act in public, I'm not understanding.
Or an expression of the First Amendment, like art.
And are you, I'm sorry, are you asking me?
Whoever, whoever wants to answer it.
So m- my simple answer, because I hear you, and I understand what you're saying, but it's saying that if it is one of those other exceptions, that means it is not lewd conduct. It doesn't mean that it might not fall under some other restriction, but it's not something that we can charge lewd conduct for.
So how do we determine intent?
Well, that, that's my, that's exactly my point.
Well, if somebody.
See, I think we.
A performance.
If it was on campus.
If they're, if they're, I mean, sir, I've seen comedians.
Don't make me defend.
Um what is it, uh I, I don't know, really trying to be delicate, I've seen comedians uh do. Physical comedy that includes what might be, can, this person might be doing. But it's as a performance, as part of his, his or, well, his, mostly um. Act, and the same thing is, I would think there are certain plays, or if you couldn't show a movie, and you know, there's lots of times when. There are certain behaviors or movements, or, you know, and it's done as part of the performance, it's not done. To, toward an individual.
Exactly, this is behavior that is targeted towards an individual who doesn't want to receive that kind of a gesture.
Is that not a form of harassment then?
Um it, well, the thing is, under the criminal code for harassment, it requires there to be a threat. And so this individual that had, in the, the case that led to this, wasn't making any threats, wasn't saying anything, was simply um, I mean, the gestures as I've described.
The other, the other uh R C W we looked at was stalking as a potential way to charge this, and the issue with stalking is that it had to be more than once. Um it had to be on multiple occasions, and or it had to be one occasion that the person was told he'd knock it off, so that following me, and they persisted.
Just feels like this is a slippery slope.
Could be.
For, to prosecute a single person.
I think, I think the problem is, and like Mike mentioned, we. A lot of jurisdictions have this statute, this, this ordinance, we don't have it, and so um regardless of this one person, it's a gap in our code that most jurisdictions have covered it, we don't, and I don't know why that is.
And I would say that a lot of women may have experienced something like this before, but because we're so accustomed to all kinds of sort of harassment and sexual innuendo and all that stuff. You blow it off and you walk on, that doesn't mean it's right that no one's reported it before.
But it also doesn't mean that it's right to report people, let's say it's just a man adjusting himself as he's walking through campus, and it just happened to make these women uncomfortable. Again, there's intent behind these things, like that's. I guess that's my big hangup here on this one, as a woman, I'm well aware of what we face.
I'm sure you are.
Not ignorant to that. Yeah.
And, and with all due respect, I would say that if you look at the police reports, uh it was pretty clear that what was happening was not a simple adjustment.
I guess that, that too, Mike can speak to this better than I can, because it's prosecutor, but there's always an element of intent for any crime that we might have to prosecute, and the burden is gonna be. The prosecution to show that the intent is.
Correct.
Well, and it might be one individual, but it's multiple victims at this point, so how many more women in Cheney have to put up with this, or young women on campus have to put up with this?
Or men being falsely targeted. That's the other thing that's taken into consideration too.
I understand that.
I, I think my challenge is. I think a lewd act is a lewd act, whether it's done in this case, or it's done. In a comedy show in public. I don't want somebody doing one of these lewd acts and calling it an art.
Well, you wouldn't buy a ticket if you wouldn't want to go to see that. You would, do you ever watch anything over P G movies, because there's just stuff like that in just about everything.
And I don't agree with it.
Well, then you probably don't want to rent it or watch it.
And I don't agree that we should have it in public, where anybody could walk by. In a park, because that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about a closed comedy.
Getting into debates about what people are offended by in public though, and it, and it goes well beyond lewd acts that offend people in public settings, so.
Yeah, I mean, but we're talking about the lewd act here, so I'm not talking about everything.
Say something, do we, uh, so with regard to this ordinance, and that's been in Spokane's books for some time. Uh do we know of any challenges, I mean, it's, is it, it's survived a number of cases, I'm assuming, or it's been on the books for a while?
Uh it was passed by the Spokane City Council on October third, two thousand twenty-two, effective that day.
Okay.
That, that was part of their sit live.
Oh.
Package.
And then just as a comment, I know Vince's question as well, that. From time to time, we're gonna find, you know, we, we need to fix our municipal code. Adjust it according to the times block and all sorts of things, as far as riding horses after midnight downtown type stuff, remove those. But I have faith in the judicial system that if someone's wrongly charged. That will come out, or if we don't have anything to charge them, I find that to be more of an issue, so. I would support.
Vince. You mentioned, it's not in the R C Ws, you mentioned C, Spokane, are there other cities across Washington that has something similar, Seattle, Tacoma, other, other.
Like Ellensburg, Holman.
Yeah, I think Mike, he could probably speak better to that, he was a survey.
And I'm not, I know that it is in other jurisdictions, I don't have a list of what cities, if that's something that the city council wanted, I could do some research and compile it.
I, my, my guess was it was gonna be pretty common across the state, I just wanted that reassurance, but I, I also don't see a problem with this, I, I don't really want to get in the weeds on this, I think it's. It makes sense that we have this on the books, gives our officers some, another, another tool, if needed.
And if, if I may add just one other comment, I have the privilege of working with both Cheney Police Department, the uh, and the E W Police Department in Cheney. Um as well as Spokane County Sheriff's Office for Medical Lake, I work with good officers, and. Oftentimes, they will call me if they have a scenario where they're trying to determine themselves whether or not there's probable cause. So even if an officer does charge something, and I look at it and I see this doesn't meet the level of probable cause, I'll dismiss it. It may be that it has probable cause, but I don't think this is something we can ever get to beyond a reasonable doubt in front of a jury. I may dismiss it if that's appropriate, so even if there is a scenario. Where someone uh, you know, is arguing that they uh were simply adjusting themselves, or whatever other possible explanation it could be. That is something then that I look at very critically, as well as whichever police department is involved, and if we don't think that's appropriate to charge, we either won't charge or I will dismiss it.
Mike, any other questions, comments? Your honor, if there are no further discussions, I will make a motion to approve ordinance Y seventy-five in title. Form and summary. Say again, I.
Title and summary only.
And, and allow the first reading to be considered the second reading, and the second reading, consider third reading for final passage.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion to second for the first reading of ordinance Y seventy-five, lewd conduct, and that in title and summary form only, and that the first reading be considered the second, and the second be considered a third, and it be placed before you all for final passage. Any final questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Ice habit, uh Cindy, are you gonna do this, Cindy, go ahead.
Thank you, chapter nine, eight point zero two, of the Chief's Code, and adding this up to the party of lewd conduct, and providing for other matters to be addressed.
Thank you, Councilmember Overhauser.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Vince.
Aye.
Jack.
Hi.
Jason.
Hi.
Mark.
Bye.
Ordinance Y seventy-five passes, thank you very much.
Good discussion.
Yes, very good discussion.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Adams.
If I'm not needed, I am gonna log off now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution two ninety, F two ninety-five, Steve, cyber, uh I'm sorry, City Fiber Optic Services Conference.
Okay, resolution two ninety, F two ninety-five, Steve, cyber, uh, I'm sorry, city fiber optic services comprehensive plan.
Evening, council. Who calls? The council approved for the communication topics and on call. Um, I uploaded the contract. I'm still, I didn't upload the sign. But the verb is still saying that. I requested from zero DB to give an estimate to build a comprehensive microbea plan for the city. Uh, they responded with an estimate of forty thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, I added in ten percent contingency plus tax. It's pretty surprised tag of fifty million dollars. And the guidance they gave me was to do a complete inventory and assessment of what the system we have here, what's our capacity, um, what is at fault, what needs to be corrected now, and then give recommendations for both. And this incorporates the city facilities, the light departments, um, fiber optic system, uh, substations for SCADA and all larger departments of well. So I think it's a very valuable thing to have a comprehensive plan for the city, being the baseline to work on and how we want to expand or meet the needs. For the city provider. You have any questions?
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve on? Getting this plan replaced?
This has been an item in front of the public works committee. We've talked about a number of occasions and I think it's. Pretty good proposal to. Finally take a look at our. Our fiber system as an entire system and what we can do thereafter. And so I fully support. Any other questions?
Any questions?
Move for the passage of, Vince, you had something?
No, I, you, you stole the.
You can second, Jose.
You bet.
Resolution F dash two nine five.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion to second to pass resolution F two nine five, the city fiber optic services comprehensive plan with zero DB communications. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Nice have it. Thank you, Steve. Resolution F two nine five passes. Other business, as always, we are in budget season, so we're going to open it up, um, have a discussion or if you have any other questions, I know Thursday we're going to have. Uh, finance one oh one. Go ahead. Cindy.
I hope everybody has had an opportunity to have a one note. You haven't, remember at home you have to VPN in first and then you can get on to the, onto one of the twenty twenty five packs about it. Um, I was going to actually pop in here and just come show you, there's a couple of, uh, a little. Here, we'll leave this word up when we think. There's the reading first page and then there's these departments across the top. So under each department, like I'll. Chief back to you sitting right there. So the departments, there'll be a police, there'll be his financial stuff, there'll be his narrative, which is his written narrative that goes in the budget document. There's the detail spreadsheets. If you want to look at those, that's, you know, everything from office supplies to maintenance to all of this stuff through every single division that he manages. And then there's a new sheet that we have this year is a summary sheet. And the summary sheet is going to show you the revenues and it's going to look at him as a whole body. And it's going to look at all the revenues that come in across all of the, um, different funds and budgets that he has hands in and it should show all the expenditures across. So it's going to show his whole footprint across the whole city and that's going to show what discretionary he's had over the last few years and how his budget has gone up or down and just a one page. And it goes by divisions. It'll go like administration, patrol, firing range, uh, facilities, and it goes capital, things like that. And you can look kind of as a summary on that. And that's just the one page document. And finance committee kind of requested that. We worked on that, um, last finance committee helped that out. So I felt those taken care of and I. That, so that's the third spreadsheet you'll see on the, under each department. And it's something new this year and I think it's valuable. We looked at it at finance committee tonight and that seems to be something that I think is going to be useful. So I'm hopeful that, um, you find it that way, but we can go over that on Thursday again. It's going to go over all that stuff with you at that point. Um, but if you have a chance to look at anything, please do, because my thoughts for Thursday is I have a. A short presentation, fifteen, twenty pages, kind of budgeting one oh one, kind of go how we get from A to A all the way over here. And then within that, there's great opportunity for you to ask if you've started to review budgets already, if you want to ask any questions, departments. Um, they'll all be here and they'll be able to answer any question for you before we start into this, this budget presentation next council meeting. We have our public hearing for our tax levies, which is our general public tax levy that includes our levy lift, our EMS levy and includes our general obligation levy for the name of our. Products and our bonds. We'll look at our. General fund and our governmental revenues, where they're at right now and how we're budgeting those for next year. And then we'll have the presentations for both police and fire. So that's on our next council meeting. So anything, if I say, if you're going to look at anything, you may want to look suppliers first, then you're able to, um, check out the language of that if you have any questions. Don't have to have you to turn that up. I'll be showing you, I'll be showing you privately, whatever you want.
Thanks Cindy. And I do recommend going to that summary page first and then you can dig deeper if you have questions. Start out at all the details, it may, it's overwhelming. It can be overwhelming. Thanks. Yes, I agree. Questions? Okay, we're going to have a lot of discussion on Thursday.
Yeah.
Staff reports, Mark.
Uh, just very quickly, uh, a lot of things going on around G. Uh, we had the group fest over the weekend, uh, great. Uh, we've got a lot of street projects, uh, should be wrapping, wrapping up a secondary project here in the next couple of days. Open that back up. Um, thanks to again to all the departments, all the work on the budgets and we look forward to having a conversation with the council about the budget for two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Um, I just want to say if you haven't got, walked or driven by North Six where the pool is, please do. It's pretty amazing how quickly they have gotten all that. Construction going. It's starting to look. Like the bones of the picture, you know, what, what it's going to look like in June, but you can start to see how it's starting to develop and it's pretty neat to see. So. Uh, Teresa, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Paul.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. We have public works committee meeting Thursday at seven. Mark has made note that he won't be able to attend. I don't know if anyone can get ahold of Danielle.
Can reach out to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I've already communicated.
Okay, super. Well, then we're good to go. We'll see you Thursday morning. That's it.
Thanks. Plan to attend SRTC on Thursday and a SWAC the next Wednesday. So. Quick reports. Next council meeting.
They got the opioid abatement council meeting coming up. They've moved them to every like few months now instead of monthly. Yeah, so that's coming up. Um, but I wanted to say make sure that you're obeying all posted speed signs, turning your headlights on and just slowing down when you're going through first. That area right at yolks, it turns into a strode. It's not safe for pedestrians and just make sure you're looking both ways before you're crossing as well as, as you're driving through there. So.
Uh, I just want to say thank you to the staff for working hard on your budgets and preparing those things and that summary page is great. Yeah. So whoever, that was good. Great. And Cindy, thanks for all your hard work too. Well, that concludes the agenda. I'm.
Second.
Motion to second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.